Good evening, welcome to the fifth meeting of the year. Today is March tenth twenty twenty five. Alyssa, can you please read the publication?
In compliance with chapter two thirty one of public law nineteen seventy five, notice this meeting to be held at the criminal justice building sixty one Main Street, South River. We publish the whole news Tribune on January fifth twenty twenty five, posted on municipal building Baltimore, the borough website, and front door of the criminal justice building at sixty one Main Street, South River.
Whoa, whoa.
Mayor Dindee.
Here.
Councilman Valas.
Here.
Councilman DeSantis.
Here.
Councilman DeZimian.
Here.
Councilman Giannopoulos.
Here.
Councilman Gertchinsky.
Here.
Council President Seela.
Here.
Thanks, please put your flag.
Flagman Dindee. This is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the moment of silence for ex-councilman Sean Hauserman and police officer of Newark Police Joseph Azoni. May be seated. Alright, before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to take a moment to honor the memory of Sean Hauserman, a former councilman, a dedicated community volunteer. He was a committed public servant who worked to improve our community and was always there to lend a helping hand. His passion for making our world a better place will be remembered by all who knew him. Our thoughts are with his family and love runs during this difficult time. Please remember Sean Hauserman. There are no proclamations, but we'll go into agenda session. Uh, I believe there's only one for second, one for first, uh. I guess John wanted the first one.
Sure, this is the second reading of a water rate ordinance. Um, making discussions with the budget committees as necessary to balance the two thousand twenty five budget.
And then the second one, Andrea.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, it's ordinance twenty twenty five dash nine. It amends your zoning code. It actually removes a provision uh that we have in the code that was put in place quite some time ago. Uh, it violates the municipal land use law uh because it permitted the reconstruction of non uh reconstruction of non-comforming structures. So it just seeks to remove that provision, so it's going to need compliance pull off.
Thank you. Alyssa, can you please read one twenty five dash eight?
Ordinance twenty twenty five dash eight, an ordinance to amend the code of Borough of South River, chapter one fifty five and town fees by amending section one fifty five dash thirty, chapter thirty four.
And motion wait for reading.
Second. Motion by council president Ceyola, second by councilman Dindee.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll let's open it up to the public, ten minutes. State your name, address, first call, second call.
You take a motion, close public?
Motion by councilman, council president Seela, second by councilwoman Valas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alyssa, first reading, twenty twenty five dash nine.
Good work, Dan.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm sorry.
Motion.
Uh, do I have a motion on uh first reading?
Motion.
Motion by councilman Kudinsky.
Second.
Second by councilman DeZimian.
Councilman Valas.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZimian.
Yes.
Councilman Giannopoulos. Councilman Gertchinsky.
Yes.
Council President Seela.
Yes.
Alyssa, first reading, twenty twenty five dash nine.
Ordinance twenty twenty five dash nine, ordinance of the Borough of South River, County Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending chapter three fifty of the Borough Code of the Borough of South River entitled zoning.
Mayor, I moved that the council passed ordinance twenty twenty five dash nine on its first reading by title only and could be authorized to publish the same as required by law. The second reading and public hearing will be held at seven P M on April the seventh twenty twenty five by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers in criminal justice building sixty one Main Street, South River.
Motion by council president Seela, second by councilwoman Valas.
Councilman Valas. Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZimian.
Yes.
Councilman Giannopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Gertchinsky.
Yes.
Council President Seela.
Yes.
And then you want to report, uh Bruce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four project that Jazz Construction has to come back out, they're doing sanitary sewer repairs, they're also working on topsoil and seeding. Then they'll be finishing the concrete work, we'll check all the handicap ramps to make sure they're all okay after the winter, if not, fix them. And then we'll begin the milling and resurfacing. The twenty twenty three local transportation projects grant, uh we're working on that design. Pretty much half the time, just wanna go out and look if the weather hasn't been good for that with the snow on the ground and such. But now that it's gone, it's a little warmer out, if we do that and then we can proof it, get it down to the V O T for review. The twenty twenty five local aid projects, we submitted a proposal for that. Substation, I'm just waiting for the reports to know everything's done. And once we get that, I guess it's really time to go back and, you know, start to work over again. This is generally an annual thing, so I will put a proposal together, I'll give a call to Sean, and I'm showing both of Chuck, and see where they are with that, and then we'll do that. And the snowmower assistance grant, there is no change in that.
Alright, thank you. Council, you have anything for Bruce? Thank you. Joe?
Two items, number one, the annual financial statement uh was filed with the state of New Jersey. It's on, it's gonna be on our website tomorrow. And the other one, we have a resolution approving uh inclusive playground equipment at Krupowski Park. If you remember, this was funded by the E E P Green Acres Grant we received last year for five hundred and fifty four thousand. This is the first part of it.
Okay. Council, you have anything for uh Joe? Joe, the question I have for you, I know we had this at the beginning of the year sometime. I know there's an impact with uh the health insurance in the state of New Jersey. Where are we right now?
We're about a twenty percent increase right now in South River, which is very, very, very significant in the budget, but you'll see that going to introduction of the budget.
Thank you. Um, Paige?
We're out there filling potholes using the coal patch. The asphalt plant doesn't open till April first. Once they open up, we'll be getting the hot asphalt, filling up the potholes.
Council, you have anything for Paige? Chief?
Mayor, I have for the uh agenda is the resolution number one thirteen and one fourteen, uh appointing Paul Misinski to acting sergeant. He will be taking over for uh Sergeant Flores, who is retiring on August thirty first, but will be uh taking his benefit on his last day here, Sergeant Flores is actually this Friday. Uh, the other one is Kenneth Nail. He is um being appointed to the active sergeant position. He's taken over for uh active lieutenant John Kenny, who is uh working in the capacity of lieutenant because of the retirement of uh Lieutenant McCluskey. So these two officers uh are on the list for our uh recent promotional exam for sergeant. So we're just going down the list and uh, you know, these two officers should be promoted or will be promoted at the end of August, uh and also at the end of July.
We're gonna put a few men down, so be.
Yes.
Council, you have anything for you? Uh, fire chief?
Thank you, Mayor, currently all units are in service. You'll notice uh we have resolution one zero eight for tonight, which will authorize most act, which is the length of state program, to authorize payment for twenty twenty four. There are currently thirty five firefighters, their qualifications appropriate, thank you.
Anything for uh fire chief? Um, Andrea?
I have nothing, it's not bad.
Alyssa?
I think tonight.
Art?
Just a couple things, we are making some progress on the people who haven't gotten their meters changed out yet. And just an update on the battery storage project, we are on schedule to be on for this spring.
Counsel, anything for Art? Alright, we're gonna start with councilman uh Chain of Coppers.
Yes, Mayor, um, so I had a couple of meetings, I had a meeting with the uh electric utility. And uh, I don't know if any everyone knows, but uh New Jersey, all the electric utilities are getting their customers ready for a twenty percent increase. In South River, we're uh not doing any increases. And as a matter of fact, also, we're not doing any increases, and during that, we're also improving our uh power grid. They've gone ahead and uh replaced most of the uh secondary power lines with new cables at a uh larger gauge that can handle more amperage, more power going through them. So in the summertime, we'll have less issues with all the heavy usage that comes in the summertime. And also with the homes that are gonna be getting uh electric car chargers and all that, should be able to handle that. And the new power lines are gonna be coated and protected with the shield. So branches and things that fall on them are causing shorts, like the old power lines. When it was really windy out, they'd get shorts and power outages just from things dropping on them. That shouldn't be a problem anymore with these new cables. That's the one thing, um. Also, I guess everyone knows that the town went through a uh a project where they changed all the L E D lighting with the streetlights. Well, that project is done, so there's no more sodium bulbs. So our town is using less power, that's all done. Um, the water utility, uh we are aware that there's five hydrants that are out. These hydrants, they uh need special parts to put them back together again. Those parts could take up to three months, cause they're custom order parts for each hydrant. They're on order, uh three of them are due to come in soon. As soon as they come in, those parts will be changed, those hydrants will be back online, and we're also working on replacing the other two. Um, and also the uh, as far as the sewer utilities, they asked us to pass a message on. Flushable wipes, regardless of what they say, are not flushable. Whether it's a diaper wipe, adult wipe, cleaning wipe, none none of those are flushable. And it creates a problem, because it will plow their sewers, you will end up having some kind of backup. And the town has to spend money to go out there and clean these backups in the sewer lines. So just as a reminder, some people don't know, but flushable wipes are not flushable. It's a problem all over the state, not just South River. And that's all I have to mention.
Councilman DeSantis.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, for the Board of Education, their next public meeting is Monday, March seventeenth at seven P M in the high school auditorium. The Recreation Advisory Board, uh registration for some spring sports are still open. T-ball, which is a fundamental instructional program, mixed for boys and girls ages four through six, they will start in mid-April. We're also looking for baseball for boys ages five through seven for the uh instructional as well, but they're still short on players, so please, if you're interested, get on the website, register. Flag football for boys and girls ages five through eighteen, the age groups will be determined once enrollment is finalized. And they're also having a co-ed division and a girls' only flag. So girls' flag football has taken off statewide, to the point that high schools now have a team. It's in the spring season, so it doesn't conflict with soccer, which is big for girl athletes, as well as regular football for the field. So we're trying to start our own girls' flag division, where girls will play against each other. And again, high school teams, NJ dot com has a had a player of the year last year for high school uh girls' flag. So that's taking off really nationwide, but in New Jersey, it's gonna be big. And probably in the next few years, you'll see a lot of local high schools having those programs, so the earlier they start, the better. We also have an adult volleyball uh league, which is open for registration, anyone eighteen or older. Um, I think we should put a council team up there and maybe we get up there and.
They should be here.
No interest? Art, you wanna play a bit?
No.
Alright, uh, so they are gonna be playing the middle school gym uh Thursday nights from seven thirty to eight forty five, and they plan to start on March twenty seventh, so registration is also open there. To register for any of those, go to W W W dot South River NJ dot org, click Departments, then Parks and Recreation, and you'll see a link to enroll. And if you have any issues online, you can always call the office at seven three two two five four 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 one two. And the next Parks and Recreation and Management Board meeting is Tuesday, April eighth at seven P M, and they meet at fifty five Green Street. Uh, residents are welcome and encouraged to attend.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman DeSantis.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The Neighborhood Watch meeting was held a few weeks ago. Uh, thank you to the police department for doing a wonderful job organizing this this event. Um, it was very successful, and these are open to South River residents. Encourage down the road, we do it every three months, and encourage other residents to get involved. It started last year, it's a good program to find out a lot, for you to ask questions to the police and learn a lot more about the the safety within um the neighborhood. The police depend on all of us, and it's a great program. It'll be again in a few months, and we'll have a date set for that down the road. That's it, Mayor.
Councilwoman Valas.
Alright. Uh, from the Board of Health, uh the free rabies clinic is gonna be held Saturday, March twenty ninth, at the D P W facility at nine Ivan Way. Twelve P M to two P M is for dogs, two P M to three P M is for cats. They're also gonna be selling licenses to South River residents only for your dog or your cat. If you're registering for the first time, you must bring a spay or neuter certificate. Um, if there's any questions, you can call seven three two two five seven one nine nine nine, exception five one seven. And again, continue to check out the uh South River Republican Library website. There's, they're having a cooking class um for kids on St. Patrick's Day, to teach them to make some Irish snacks. They're bringing to me. Um, they're also doing a a thing, if you have a pet that is either with you now or not, they're going to be doing a thing, if you bring your picture there, they're gonna do etchings. So if anybody wants to check that out, but again, check out the website, they have so many things going on this month. And that's all I have.
Councilman Gertchinsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Office on Aging, uh please check your email and the uh borough website to sign up for any programs that you want to sign up for during the month. Uh, generally, it's beginning of the first week to sign up for different programs. Um, could it maybe room yet, I'm not sure. It's R S B P for a de-cluttering workshop seminar, that's at eleven o'clock on March twenty seventh. Uh, some of the other um events are revealed already. And the Office on Aging is also having a thing on the New Jersey property tax relief. And uh, someone from the uh Division of Taxation will be Thursday on May eighth at eleven P M. Whether there's room or not, I'm not sure. You probably will have to call the Office on Aging to find out a little bit more if there is availability. Uh, this will encompass any questions that you have on senior frees and the uh anchor homeowners and any other of the programs that the state is offering the REITs for. With that, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Council president, Joe?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the only thing I have is the E D C is gonna be having a meeting this Wednesday. Um, they're really starting to move forward on different projects that they wanted to move down. So um, I'll be reporting as we get more and more close closer to the uh actual times, so.
Thank you, I will hold my comments. I am opening up to the public, five minutes, uh state your name, your address.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Joe Donato from thirty Daly Street, Green South River. Um, just two quick things, number one is parking. I don't know how many people notice I spoke with Councilman Gertchinsky uh just before the meeting, but people seem to be parking anyplace they can park. If it's not clearly signed one way or the other, regardless of how wide the street is, they're parking, and they don't necessarily park against the curb. They have their butts sticking out into the intersection, and this has been going on for quite some time. I know some areas should have been painted marked off. Some of them are so worn, it isn't, yeah, you can hardly say it. But I suggest that uh, if at all possible, to alleviate those problems, I'll take a look at it. Whatever, they have to paint, put signs up, whatever the case may be. I'm sure you got a list of where people are allowed to park and not allowed to park. Um, but you saw, uh because there's gonna be traffic accidents, or some kid is gonna run out in between bars, and they don't want that to happen. Um, second item, uh I know you, uh the council is very proud of the battery project, and right this time, I've been trying to get some information about it, and I've gotten some information, I have a few concerns. I'm not gonna bring them up now, because I've asked for some more information, hopefully that will resolve my concern. But anything that I come up with, I am going to, because it's only five minutes and I have a tendency to keep on talking, um, I will send an email to each one of you, they've got everybody's email address, including the clerk, which I do have your address. Um, and I'll express what my concerns are and my questions, so when I come to a meeting. Um, and I'll let you know which meeting I'll, that I plan on being. Uh, we can maybe address those fairly quick.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do I have anything else?
Good evening, uh, Mayor, council, my name is Edwin Perez, uh sixty four, we head out. Um, I have a couple of questions, uh I just wanna, I hope all of you are doing well today. Just wanted to bring to your attention that the Borough of South River, if we can, accepting cannabis uh license suitability applications for class five retail to uh as of today. Um, this raised some concerns for me, because as of our last meeting of February twenty fourth, at the council meeting, at that time, the borough representatives explained to me that this required a twenty day stopper period before applications would be received. With this in mind, I would appreciate some kind of vacation, I think it's how how so, I'm following the plan, so I have four points. Uh, and I know I sent you the email, you're gonna listen.
Yes, yes, and I did not to cut you off, cause this is your time, but you did send that email, I did get it late this afternoon. I do absolutely intend to respond to you fully. Uh, one point that just, I I don't believe council actually has been updated on this, but one point is that um resolutions of local support are not tailored to one license. So so any operation that comes in and has an acceptable application with acceptable, with an acceptable location will, in fact, depending on councils, will get a resolution of local support. It's not only tailored to one applicant. So so while I understand your concern, just please bear in mind that fact.
Completely understand, but that's still different because of those twenty day stopper period, when they're gonna accept my class five, so that was still different. Completely understand if you could accept the class one before, but my specifically, I'm just talking about class five.
Did you, you you put your class five in today, correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay, so so what I was trying to advise you is that that you put that in today, that it's not a first come, first served, so you won't be, you're not um at any disadvantage. From you, you still put it in, whether you put it in today or if you put it in in day twenty, resolutions of local support only, your suitability application goes directly to your resolution of local support. Your resolution of local support only tells the state that you have complied with our requirements and that you have an appropriate location. So you're, we're not limited to one, so whether you put it in today or you put it in thirty days from now, it's, you're on the same plane.
Okay, so just to put that in other words, basically, the town is offered multiple letters of support.
Resolutions of support, yes.
Okay, and then it's up to.
And then it's it, the application for the license is first come, first served.
Right.
But the resolution of global support only says, you have an appropriate entity, this is what you're intending to do, and this is the location that you're intending to do it. You have proof that that's the location you're uh intending to do it, and that's a location that has been pre-approved by the council. And then that goes to the state, and then you do what you need to do at the state, and then you have to come back and apply for the license.
Okay, clear.
So so the time period, while I understand there was a little confusion there, it it's not going to disadvantage your application or anybody else's application that that puts it in.
Well, that's great to hear, so thank you so much for.
You're welcome.
And I did have a question about the review process, just, you know, this is a very intensive, there's consultants involved, right? I got security companies waiting, cause I have all the assistance of the state, so just kind of curious, what is the timeline for the, I know it was a half, you know, this is a record store, but just to kind of build up my timeline, and the timeline's a little bit, just kind of curious, like what's the review process on your side, what are your asking?
So. So it it, and Mayor, if we could have maybe another minute, just because I've been tinging up to say I'm answering these questions. Um, just so you are aware, uh, at least for the initial applications, we have to do the resolution of local support at uh uh borough council meetings. So depending on how complicated they are, um, we would, in theory, and please don't hold me to this, but in theory, the resolutions can be on at the next meeting.
Okay.
So so there is potential that resolutions of global support would be on at the next meeting. I think that would give us all sufficient time, depending on, and again, please, I I haven't fully reviewed all of the applications that just came in today. Um, it would depend on how much in depth that is, but most likely, it, resolutions of local support can start being put on the agenda as of next meeting.
Okay.
As the April meeting, I'm not sure, it'd be exactly April seventy seven.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That's just helpful for my clarity, because I also have to relate to the NJ CRC, kind of the little timelines and stuff like that. They typically understand, you know, it's healthy to be.
Yes.
So thank you so much, appreciate it, thank you, thank you.
Anyone else with a problem?
Good evening, Mayor, council, Jim Heskey, thirty, Virginia Street. Just a real quick question on some of the storm sewer, of work that's going on in town. I saw it today, I live there on Daly Street. I also see some markouts on Darrow Street, right in front of my driveway. Are we gonna be dropping notifications off? Is the contractor be dropping notifications off whenever he's doing the work? How are you gonna get access uh to it, before they start sending out?
There are some work that is tied into the road program. There is also some other work that is tied into our PARPA federal account, which we have some manhole covers that need to be rebuilt.
Is this one, what says? Yeah, I can see it says storm sewer repair.
And that's, that's what we're doing with local contractor, and in in the past, B N W has notified everybody.
Okay, just wanna make sure, okay, thank you. Um, second off, um, I think the entire borough is in shock of the passing of a former council president, councilman, I believe he was acting mayor, Sean Hauserman. I found out last night, and uh, someone who served with uh Mr. Hauserman, uh just shocking news. I think Sean's a year old, he's a year older than me, yeah, we served together on council, I was council president. And uh, no matter what, Sean and I disagreed a lot of times on the political stances. Um, but we shared that common information. And even though maybe we had a different thought process, a different opinion, it was always respectful in our discussions. We were both very passionate about the way we felt. And again, no matter what your feelings were as far as either supporting positions of of him or going against his position. As the mayor so appropriately stated, he served the town, he was a servant to the town. It's not easy to do what all these folks up here do. It's not easy. You're giving yourself tremendous exposure to the public. Um, you're ridiculed, sometimes you're praised, but there'd be good thing you did, there's like thirty six things that go wrong. So, Mr. Hauserman took a lot of heat, as do we all who serve up here. But he served, he served. And I'll miss him, I'll miss him tremendously. I had some great conversations with Sean, and I'm still in shock of what took place. And I just wanna say, his family, we're all shocked, we offer incredible condolences, and we thank Sean for what he provided to the borough. He's gonna be sorely missed. Rest in peace, Sean, thank you.
Or anybody else in the public? First call, second call?
Motion to close public?
Motion by council president Seela.
Second.
Second by councilwoman Valas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, for the consent resolutions, Alyssa?
Whereas resolution twenty twenty five oh one authorizes the Borough Council to utilize consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and uncontroversial nature at one time. Now therefore be it is hereby resolved that the below listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole as of the same or individually acted upon. Consent resolutions twenty twenty five one oh eight to twenty twenty five one twenty two. One oh eight approved twenty twenty four most that list and contributions. One oh nine appointing secretaries to the Board of Health. One ten permit a voluntary canning fundraiser to support the South River High School Booster Club. One eleven authorizing the purchase and installation of various improvements at Krupowski Park. One twelve authorizing the police department to enter into a contract with Elite Emergency Lights LLC. One thirteen authorizing the appointment of Paul Misinski as acting sergeant. One fourteen authorizing the appointment of Kenneth Nail as acting sergeant. One fifteen authorizing certain utility refunds. One sixteen authorizing submission of the Middlesex County Recycling Enhancement Grant Application. One seventeen authorizing amendment to the Borough of South River Cash Management Plan. One eighteen authorizing a shared service agreement with Middlesex County Improvement Authority for recycling collection and marketing services. One nineteen accept February. One nineteen accept February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five regular session minutes. One twenty authorize the bills and claims list. One twenty-one approving property tax refund. And one twenty-two approving property tax refund.
Who's the resident?
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Valas, second by Council President Seola.
Councilwoman Valas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZamian?
Yes.
Councilman Giannopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes, the extension from one oh eight and on one twenty twenty-five dash zero zero five one seven.
All right, we are only going to uh go any long comments, starting with uh Councilman Gertenski.
Thank you, mayor. Um first off, I'd like to thank our police, border, and uh neighborhood Johnson for all they do to serve our public and everything. It's getting warmer, we're daylight savings. Kids are out there, watch yourself, please. They're all over the playgrounds and everywhere else. Uh also, I'd like to give my congratulations and have a happy retirement to Sergeant Flores and Lieutenant McCloskey. Uh welcome our new fellows on at, well, not new fellows, but their appointment says acting sergeant and acting lieutenant. With that, that's all I really have right now. Thank you, mayor.
Councilwoman Valas?
Okay, um as you noted, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Hightson, I also served with Sean. At one time, um there were four of us from our graduating class of nineteen seventy-six. Which was amazing that we were all there, I at the same time. And and again, we didn't always agree, but out of those meetings, he was always respectful. And willing to listen so to his family, I say my deepest condolences. Um other than that, happy St. Patrick's Day and happy spring, because it's coming and I can't wait. And again, like Mr. Gertenski said, be careful with kids. They're all out there scooters tonight, enjoying this lovely weather and the sun doesn't set until almost seven, I love it. So enjoy.
Councilman DeZamian? Um the next theme concert at the Imperial Music Center. It's a little ways off, we don't have a meeting between them. It's uh on the first Sunday of every month, so it's April sixth at two o'clock. Again, that's at the Imperial Music Center. Um it's open to the public, it's a lot of fun, free music. You might know some of the people that play there, there are four. Some of them are former South River band members from years ago. Um it's a great time. And I also like to extend my condolences to the family of Sean Howserman. A little bit older than me, but I remember him from high school. He would be one of the ones that was a senior when I was a freshman. I knew him since then, and I also remember him delivering newspapers and when I'd be out there running, sometimes I'm gonna stop and uh just talking to him. And again, echoing whatever he else said. He did a lot for the town, he, you know, he was out there. And like what Jim said, he put himself out there to come up and do what he can. Um try hard for the town that he loved. Um and he's gonna be missed. And that's all I have.
Counselor, anything else?
I just want to also for my condolences for the passing of Sean Howserman. Uh he's discussed sometimes in some of the of our things that we go through. And the one thing that always sticks out is people talk about he was very brilliant, intelligent, very smart. Like and I, anybody that wants to put themselves out there, like we said, and to have a mind like that, regardless of size, it's just a, it's a shame. And I just wanna wish him rest in peace.
Counselor, Jenny Hallis?
I'd like to reiterate that um my condolences to uh Sean Howserman's family, close friends. I was also uh friends with Sean, but we didn't, you know, always agree on our political views. He was a good man and uh he will be missed. That's all I have, ma'am.
Council President?
Yes, just to reiterate uh condolences to the Howserman family. Uh again, kids are outside riding their bicycles. And uh please be very careful, watch your speed and uh keep an eye out for the kids, just jump now in front of everybody. And just wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day.
As you heard earlier, uh Paige uh mentioned that they are filling potholes. If you have one next to your house, I mean, it's all over, please call, let them know, put it on the list. He'll come out and actually just take care of the uh pothole. Parking, Mr. Donato, I totally agree with you. And this is my biggest advice to you and for that matter, everybody else, and I do it just every other day. And I know the police hates my call. Call the police, let them know where there's legal parking. I mean, they're, it's it's a town of two point seven mile radius. They only have three or four squad cars at one time driving down. Just call them, they'll come out, they'll move them, they'll take the, do whatever they have to do to, you know, clear the road. Um Sean, I know I had a few words to get at this meeting. I also have the uh opportunity to serve with him on both sides. Uh he is a brilliant person, uh he is gonna surely be missed. He served with us for ten solid years as a council member. Uh he has done a lot for his town, I know uh, you know, looking at the corner, usually you see him back there with a computer. He is gonna be surely missed. And uh happy St. Patrick's Day. Go ahead, Mr. German.
Motion? Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Valas, second by Council President Seola.
Paul Shaver?
Aye.
James O.